Good afternoon and welcome to the January 3, 2022, Special City Council Meeting. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Chaburka, who has asked to be excused today. First off, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance offered by Vice Chair White.
Please rise if you are able. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We would now ask that you join with us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we move on, we have a special video we'd like to show here in the chambers.
There are some moments that I'm glad about it and moments that, you know, I would like to have it continue on, but that's not the case. And I think the decision of not to run was the proper one at that particular time. So I feel good about that. You build relationships not only with present council members, but also past council members. Those are relationships that you carry on for the rest of your life, and they mean a lot to me. I've been able to associate with this many different individuals that have contributed a great deal to the city. I won't miss the long nights, but that's part of the business. That's part of what we're into. I will miss the parade. I'll miss going to Weber State's football and basketball games. But most important of all, I'll miss the association with the many friends and people that I had the opportunity to serve with. I'll have Tuesday nights off, for sure. I won't have any meetings. What I want to do is continue to be engaged in the city and make sure that we're continuing to move ahead in a positive and effective manner. I just want to thank Ogden for this opportunity and the experience. It has been, like I said, a once-in-a-lifetime experience and something that I'll remember the rest of my life. I grew up here. I am a hometown boy, and I believe Ogden is a great place to raise my family. It's a great place to raise our family, the families that come and visit with Ogden. It's a great place to work. And that's what I want to depart to and say to the citizens, the car, the employees, the city, the administration, the council, the council staff, is that I appreciate all the opportunities they gave me and the way they've been able to treat my family. And there is a great deal that I'm taking from this position than what I contribute. Bob Hope had a saying that says, "Thanks for the memories." And that's what I want to do for the parting addresses, that I want to thank them for the memories that they've given to me.
Next on the agenda is comments from Councilmember Stevens, our guest of honor.
I guess that video says it all. I've noticed in that video, I was a little younger at one time and had less gray hair than what I have today, but I want to take this opportunity to wish you all a very happy New Year. And I hope the year 2022 will be an outstanding year for you, that you'll enjoy the blessings of associating with one another, but also associating with everyone. I believe that 2022 has some great challenges for us and some great opportunities, but I hope it is a benefit to all of you. I understand there's some changes even from that video, changes in my life. Like I said, I'll have Tuesdays off, but I'm sure Sandra will fill that up very aperitively. But Ken Ritchie will have changes in his life. He thinks he's, it may be calm today, but wait until tomorrow at City Council meeting. This day did not just happen. It has been 16 years, and this is the culmination of that, the beginning of a journey that I'll never forget. I have some strong emotions about this day, but I know it was the right decision. President Kennedy, in addressing in one of his inaugural speeches, said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." I think I would like to paraphrase that and ask, "Ask not what Ogden can do for you, but what you can do for Ogden." I'm very appreciative of the reporter who put the piece in the paper and for the interview which I had, but there are some things, as you know, with all political interviews, there needs to be some corrections made. It says that I'm not going, that I have no regrets. Well, that in one sense is true. I don't, I have no regrets, the position and the progress and the positive direction of Ogden. I think Ogden is in the right place, and I now have analyzed the position of where we're at and the many hands and the many individuals who have put us there, the long hours and the talents that has been contributed. It was time to maybe step away and do something else. As the video mentioned, I do have some regrets. I have the regrets of associating with this council staff of our council. It is the best council in the state of Utah. They are professional. They have a work ethics, and most important of all, they have an interest and a desire for each council member to reach their goals. That is unmatched of helping us to achieve what we need to achieve. I have some mixed emotions because there are unfinished business at hand. There will always be unfinished business. Doesn't matter what station in political life you are, you have been, but there always will be unfinished business. But it's the relationships, the working together, the collaboration that makes the difference and the development of not only present councils, but the past councils. I have to make another correction. As reported, that Sandra and I have been married 47 years. Last time I saw counted was 52, but I'm sure that we would want to make that as a correction there. I have enjoyed this journey, and as I mentioned before, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me. Ogden is my hometown. I grew up here. I was educated here, and I attended the Ogden City Schools, graduated from Ben Lomond High School, which Rich and I are very proud to represent, and also one of the finest universities in the state of Utah, Weber State. These are the things that make Ogden as my hometown. I am very proud of the accomplishments of not only past, but present councils, but what we have accomplished is not, is not, we've had many hands and many individuals help us that have talent and professionalism to achieve the heights that we have here in our great city. Whenever I go to a meeting in St. George or Salt Lake City, I'm proud to stand up and say, "I'm a citizen of Ogden, and I'm proud to be on, serving on that council. They know who you are. They know who we are, and they look to us." In fact, they look too hard and they take our employees away from us, but we would, but that's because we train them properly. When I first came on the council, we had an infrastructure of water, sewer, and stormwater that needed help. And today, we have the best water in the state of Utah. But it has, it comes along with challenges and some really anxious moments. We had to not only continue to Band-Aid our system, but we had to improve it and then replace it, and that's exactly what we did. Our roads are much more improved so that we can enjoy traveling throughout the city. Our parks are continually being improved. Our trails and environment is what dropped individuals here. Being concerned about clean air and the renewable energy is another part which we as Ogdenites take very seriously. The other aspects of Ogden that I am proud of is the economic opportunities that are here, both for big business and small business. The most important and proudest moment that I have is providing the capabilities of our employees, rewarding them for what they do for us. That is the greatest asset that we have in the city, are the employees that serve us. They serve us because they have a desire to serve. They are focused on how they can help our city grow and develop. When I came on the council, there was a statement that says, "Ogden, all within reach," and that statement still is true today. You can get anything and you can reach anything here in Ogden, Utah. The other aspect is, is that I want to thank not only my family, I want to thank Sandra. I, you know, I was going to start out and say I haven't felt this way since I was married 51, 52 years ago, but I want to thank her for her companionship and her love and her devotion. It's not easy to be a wife of a council member because there are phone calls that come, but it is, but I want to thank her. I'd also like to thank the support of my own, my family. One time I took our grandkids out passing out flyers throughout an area on a Saturday, and we met, started out and we met at our starting point, and I said, "Well, let's go get some ice cream." And so we went to Farce to get some ice cream, and while eating the ice cream, one of the grandkids came up and says, "Grandpa, I passed out your flyers," and there was a husband and a wife in the yard, and I gave one to him, and I said, "You are the best." And, you know, if I would have said that to him, they wouldn't have believed me, but when the grand, when the grandchild said to us, I'm sure they were able to do that. The other aspect, I want to thank Mayor Caldwell, Mark, the administration for your support, for your energy in helping me become the, to do my job. Being a council, the duties of a councilman is much easier because of the administration that we have. Our employees are the best in the state. They are committed to what they're doing, and I appreciate not only the administration. I also have mentioned several times, I want to give a big thank you to our council staff. They helped me tremendously. I couldn't have done it without them. They are A-OK. They are the best, as stated, in the state. I'd like to also thank my fellow council members. You have contributed a great deal to me. I have got, as mentioned in the video, I have gained more from you than what I will contribute. The success that I've seen as a council is not what I've done. It is a combination of many individuals, and that's, that's the important aspect of As stated in the video, it said that Bob Hope said, "Thanks for the memories." And some of you do not know who Bob Hope is, and some of you do, but that is exactly what I'm taking from this experience as being on the council. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the memories, and thank you for your loving and your support that you've given me for the last 16 years, and I hope to see you around. I'm not going away too far, but I do have an interest in Ogden because it is my hometown. Thank you.
With that, there's some good parts about being in the chair, and there's some bad parts, and this is a hard part for me to have, to be part of this and be part of, be part of your departure. But with that, we thank you for your comments. We thank you for the service that you provided and everything you did for, for this city. And I think we'll all talk a little bit more about that in a little bit, but we appreciate all that you did. We thank you. And now, as we move through the agenda, there's, we ask you, or we invite you to go sit with your wife for the first time in a long time, probably, and then we can invite council-elect Ken Ritchie up here to be sworn in with the newly elected council members. We have Tracy here, so we'll go ahead and administer the oath of office for all newly elected council members. As mentioned, Councilmember Chaburka is asked to be excused today, and she's arranged to have her oath of office. She'll do hers tomorrow at the City Council meeting tomorrow.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of Utah
and the Constitution of the state of Utah
and that I will discharge the duties
and I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Now is the opportunity for comments from any newly elected council members. I don't know if you want to go first. It can be from any council members, any. I have my own spot at the end, so I'll, I'll hold my comments till the end if anyone has any comments.
Ladies first? Ladies first?
Sure, I'll go first. I just want to, I was doing some quick math because that's what I do, Doug. I appreciate at least 832 Tuesdays that you've spent here. 416 of those, I've been with you, so I appreciate that. 30% of your married life, you've been on the council. So, yeah, I just, I had to do some math for you. And knowing that I will, I will miss you, I will miss your consistency, your demeanor, your loving, loving thoughts to everyone, not just a few. I appreciated a while ago when you stood up for LGBT rights, and I appreciate that now. And so there's so much that I will miss from you, but I hope that you get to get at least some of those percentages back in your, your marriage life, that it won't happen, that you will continue to spend the Tuesdays here. And I know that you won't, I'm sure you will be around in our events, and I'm sure that that will not stop you just because you're not on the council. So I look forward to seeing you. And the biggest thing that I will miss is your predictions for Weber State's football, basketball, and any other type of sports from Weber State. So, thank you, Doug.
So, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is a little overwhelming. Doug, I've known you for a long time. Doug sold me my first suit a long time ago, and seeing him around the city at various functions always represented the city well, and I know that the shoes I have to fill are, are big shoes to fill, and appreciate his, his leadership and the example that he's, he's played in that. And since, since Election Day and getting to this point has been, it's felt like, it's felt like, like 100 years almost, just waiting for this opportunity to finally get up here and, and take this oath. There's a lot, a lot of emotions running through me at this time as I think about that opportunity, and a dear friend has told me once that there's more than one way to give your life to your country, and this is a sweet opportunity for me to take the chance to, to serve in this capacity. And I want to thank, I've had tremendous support from, from many. I want to thank the current council members who have all reached out to me and made me feel welcome, and I appreciate that. My family, and I know that, you know, bracing myself for the storms to come, which Doug alluded to. I've got, I'm grateful for the support behind me and the cheering section back there, and thank you for being here. And so I'll, I've got a lot to learn, and I'll probably be observant and sitting quietly as much as I can, and as you guys help me find my way. So thank you.
Thank you. Comments from other council members?
Chair, I'll take a minute if I can then. I, I want to start off that every two years, we get to have Tracy come up and administer the oath, and that's a sacred oath. I appreciate hearing it, you know, every two years. I think it is, it is the foundation by which we do what we do. I appreciate Doug. We've known each other a long time. He might have sold you his first suits, but I probably bought 10 suits from Doug, and he measures well, and I guess you don't tailor, but somebody does after you measure. So, but, but I've known Doug for a long time. His wife Sandra and I grew up together. She's a little older than me. I'm not going to say how much. You're welcome. But, yeah, she grew up next door, and so Doug and I went to the same high school different times, and so we've known each other a long time. A lot of the same, cut from a lot of the same cloth, and I appreciate Doug's trailblazing for me on the council. He was here before I came on, and he figuratively put his arm around me and kind of helped me find my way through some of the new stuff that you don't think about when you, when you're running for election, but I appreciate the, the time we, we were able to ride back and forth from, from these meetings. We started doing that, golly, it's probably been eight years ago, I think, something like that. And we did it just to start, quit polluting the air. That was the whole point, was just to kind of save that, that exhaust from getting into our, into our air, but it became a treasured experience to be able to kind of talk about some of the things, and all the things that were pertinent to the council, just generally pertinent to the city, our families, lots of different types of conversations Doug and I had together that I, I treasure and I'm grateful for and I will miss. Hopefully, you'll still call Sunday nights sometimes and talk about some of the things that are, that are on our agenda. We, we had some, some Sunday night conversations that kind of helped to clarify some of the things that were going on with the council, and I appreciate being able to, to have you as a sounding board and perhaps maybe vice versa. I kind of got a hunch that maybe you will still stay involved because that's the kind of heart you have. You are interested in what happens in your city. You love Ogden and will weigh in in positive ways. I like Marcia, very much appreciate your demeanor. You never got your hair on fire and went crazy about anything, so you always kind of kept, kept things in a real pleasant way, and thank you for that. Ken, I'm so eager to, to serve with you. We have neighboring municipal districts, and I know a lot of people that speak very, very highly of you, and my interactions with you up to this point have been very, very professional, very, very good. I've met much of your family, and they are good people. I think Ogden has, has some good things in store coming from you, and I appreciate, I appreciate everyone who goes into Tracy's office and signs up to run. That is an act of courage, and, you know, I gotta tell you, that's a, that's a wonderful thing. I'm glad you, I'm glad people do that, and I, and I appreciate those who have run. And I hope we still continue to do that, but, but welcome to the council. Look forward to the serving with you and doing some great things, so. And thanks again, Doug. This is not goodbye. I will, I'm sure we'll continue to run into one another. You don't live that far away. So thanks, Doug.
Doug, I said this in our last meeting, but I'll say it again. We're going to miss your heart. Your heart has always, always been pure, and it's always been in the right place. And we sure, we sure love you, Doug, and we're sure going to miss you. It's a, it's an end of an era, I suppose, right? But congratulations to the returning council members. You guys have certainly earned the opportunity to continue to serve Ogden You guys have certainly earned the opportunity to continue to serve Ogden and serve, serve well. So, congratulations to Ken. Welcome aboard. There are storms, they're coming. But I've learned that, for me anyway, it really helps to know it's not, the storms are about certain issues. There are certain, there are disagreements ahead, but it's just that, it's just disagreements. Sometimes it's a difference of opinion, sometimes it's a difference of values, difference of priorities. But the things that are not different amongst all of us, everybody in the crowd, everybody in the community, on the council and in the administration, is everybody are good people. They have good hearts. We've got good intentions and we're all here for the same reason, it's to make Ogden better. We love this town, just like Doug has faithfully served this community for a lot of years. We welcome you to do the same and look forward to serving alongside you. But there are good people to serve and good people to serve alongside here. So, look forward to it.
Hey, Doug, is, it's hard to say what's, what's already been said, right? Which is, which is, everybody appreciates who you are and your, your heart and your kindness. And I think that's what most of us are going to take with us and remember from you. That's, that's what I will take with me. So I, I thank you for that. I thank you for, for always being very kind and, and for having a, a big heart and being there for people. You're, you're, I think you're always there for everybody. I think you, I've never seen you being tribal in any way. And so I appreciate any, any time that you and I have had, all the good interactions that we've had and I'm going to take that with me. And thank you for, for the service you provided to, to our city for the last 16 years. And what I'm going to miss the most is teasing you about being, serving here for so long. As you know, we, we love to do that, but you know that it's, it's with a, with, with a great heart that we do that.
I know. Don't tell him.
And Ken, I just want to reiterate what I said when I met with you the other day when we had a chance to meet and chat for a little bit. I didn't say the first part, but I'll say it here. My, my spiritual training teaches me that the new people are always the most important people. So to me, you're the most important people here today. Thank you for being here. And like I said when we met before, anything I can do to help you be successful, I will do my best to do that. So, thanks for, thanks for being here and I look forward to serving with you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I said this earlier about, when I was, I can't remember when it was, Brandon Stevenson was leaving the city, the council and Amy Wicks made a superhero. She went and got a doll and turned it into a, a city council super, action figure. And she gave that to Brandon. And, and I've, I've wanted to and wished I could find a superhero or an action figure for Doug. I, and I've, I've talked about what his, what his superpowers would be at, at other meetings, but I, I just want to focus that we may be, we may be losing a, a council member, but, but we've got Ken Ritchie here and he's going to fill in and, and he's going to be great. And I know that. What I'm, what we're not losing is, is a mentor. All of us have talked about how Doug reached out, mentored each and every one of us, took us under his wing and showed us how and the best way to, to be a council member and to serve this community. We're not going to lose an example. Doug was a wonderful example on how to handle himself in a meeting, how to handle himself in the community, how to be involved in the community and how to engage the community. And, and those are things I'll always have. And we're not going to lose a friend. Doug has truly become a great friend to me and I think each and every one of us. So we're, we're super sad that you won't be here on Tuesday nights, but we're thankful for the service that you did provide. We're thankful for the service that I know you'll continue to provide in a different capacity and we're thankful for the, just like you were thankful for the memories that you provided each and every one of us. Just a little bit about Doug. I don't know if any of you know, he's a, he's a tremendous painter. He paints. And I'm excited because he'll have some more time to paint. I was blown away when he first showed me his first painting. I thought he just bought it, but it was, it was beautiful and he's a great painter. And I'm excited to see what he can paint now and the time he'll have for that. People have talked about his huge heart. Doug does have, he's almost all heart. He cares about this city. He cares about its residents and he loves each and everybody he comes in contact with. He truly seeks the good in everyone. And it's one of the things that I want to take away from, from Doug and, and be better at, like, like, like Councilmember Stevens is. Doug is, was always eager to learn. And as Councilmember Hire pointed out, Doug was not only eager to learn, Doug was also eager to work together and to, to bridge gaps. Like was mentioned, Doug was probably the one that reached out the most on those Sunday nights and asked, hey, where are you at on this? How do you feel about that? How can we work better on this? And I valued those conversations and I appreciate, it, it seems so easy to, I'm going to reach out and call the other council members. But things happen, time passes and it just, it seems like it doesn't happen as often as it maybe should. And I appreciate Doug always being willing to pick up the phone, to reach out and to make those connections and to bridge those gaps. I'm very excited that Ken is here now. I'm excited for what you bring to the council. I'm excited for your passion and your enthusiasm for this city. I know you have a, a great family. You come from great family. You've, have a great family that you've, you and your wife have, have also started a beautiful family and I, I'm excited to work with you. I guess now, this is going to be hard to say, Doug, but I'm the senior council member, so I guess it's my role to pass on some wisdom. I would, I would say that, to, to be willing to pick up the phone, be willing to call and reach out, get information from others. And also learn from, from everyone up here. This is truly a talented, talented council and it's, it's, I know the Tuesday night meetings are hard and the Tuesday night meetings sometimes go long, but it is, it is an honor and it is a joy to be able to work with each and every one of these other six people and, and not only learn from them, but watch them and, and be able to take some of their passions, some of their wisdom and some of their knowledge and incorporate into my own life. And so I, I'm excited for you. I'm excited for your whole family. It's fun to do this with a family and it's been great that I could do this with mine. So with that, I don't know if there's any other comments? Sorry? Yeah? Are there any comments from administration?
Sure, I'll be brief. A lot of it's already been said. Doug, thank you very much for your service. And I agree with the comments that putting your name on the ballot and saying, I'm willing to serve and putting yourself out there can be absolutely terrifying as all of you understand it. So, it's a personal thing. And so we really do recognize and appreciate that. Ken, I want to say congratulations. I know when you go for your first one, there's so much to learn and, and you just have no idea what you're stepping into. So you've weathered it well and we look forward to working with you. I hope 2022 sets a, a new tone in a lot of regards for a, a lot of people. I think, I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season. It was nice to have some warmth. Jay's over here, want to thank he and his team for everything they did for Christmas Village. But again, we do look forward to working with you all. And as Councilmember Nadolski said, yeah, we sometimes disagree. We sometimes don't have the same philosophy on things, but we've tried really hard to respectfully work through those things and to find common ground. And that's something that we're committed to continuing to do and look forward to having you on the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just, I know he probably will be mad at me for doing this, but I want to acknowledge President Mortensen for being here. He's a very humble man, but wanted to acknowledge being here and supporting us. Thank you, President Mortensen. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, I was suggested maybe I should make the motion to adjourn.
There you go.
So, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie and a second by Councilmember Stevens to adjourn this meeting. This is a voice, oh, sorry, Hire. Sorry. There's hors d'oeuvres, I'm already excited. Sorry. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Thank you.